Good. Well, my name is Julie Pierce. I'm the mayor of Clayton and I am going to call the regular joint meeting of the Clayton City Council and Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District to order. It is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. Who knew we'd still be on Zoom at this point? But we are in a Zoom meeting for everyone's safety. And so those of you in our audience as attendees, if you want to make comment at the appropriate time, you will raise your hand with the Raise Hand feature, or if you are on a phone, and I do see one person on a phone, that might be, anyway, hit star nine in order to raise your hand. So we will take public comments. There will be three minutes. When we call your name, you will be unmuted. You will speak for three minutes and we will re-mute your line. So with that, we are called to order. Let me indicate for the record that all council members are present. And I will ask Councilmember Diaz to say the pledge of allegiance for us and the rest of us will be quiet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. These are routine items. Is there anyone wishing to pull any item for clarification or a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Diaz?
Second.
Second by Catalano. Did we have any public comment on this item, Janet, that came in ahead of time?
Mayor Pierce, there was no public comment received on this item.
Okay, and I don't see any raised hands for the attendees either. So with that, I will call for a roll call vote. Please, Janet?
Sure. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Okay.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce. Yes. Thank you.
All right, we have no recognitions and presentations this evening. We will go to reports. We did not have a meeting of the Planning Commission, nor of the Trails and Landscape Committee. So Laura, would you give us your acting city manager and staff report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, there's nothing really to report this week, but I do want to just let the public know if they're here for the GHAID item for the assessment levy. That item has been included in the pack to be continued to your meeting of the 4th of August. So if there is public comment, we can still take that this evening, but the full presentation report will be made at your next meeting. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you for reminding me. I was supposed to say that at the beginning. So in the GHAID, we will have public comment and the consent calendar if someone has something to say there, but the public hearing has been moved to, I think you said, August 4th. Is that correct?
Yes, you would need to open the hearing and then continue it to August 4th.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
When did that happen?
It was included in the packet.
Okay. All right. So we will go to city council reports and I'm going to start with Jim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I only have two meetings. One, I actually was able to attend the virtual Contra Costa Water District meeting last Wednesday evening. Very informative as they were back to that type of a format, but they are also doing in-person meetings as well. For anybody that's been in that facility, they have a pretty large auditorium, so they're able to socially distance very well. The major topic of the evening, other than their closed session, was a discussion of the state budget, which and how it's impacting the water district. Nothing real material at this point. Second, after that meeting, I went out to Morgan Territory Road where strictly in advisory manner, I am working with a group of citizens out there in the unincorporated area of Clayton, and they are trying to work on fire service issues. It's a huge problem for them. Just a very thumbnail, they sometimes have to wait 30 minutes to an hour for a response on fire. That's not acceptable by them and they're working on ways to fix that and address it. And I'm just, as an advisory capacity, nothing official. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, I think they're using, actually, CalFire is kind of pinch hitting for them more than East County Fire.
Yeah, they're actually under CalFire, or excuse me, East County Fire, but they contract out to CalFire. And unfortunately, the station that gets the first call is in Livermore. So that's part of the problem.
Very strange. Okay. All right, Tuya?
So I think the only item to actually officially report, so Councilmember Wolf and I have worked on some of the details for the Public Safety Committee, and we'll have something in terms of the details for the first meeting to publish very soon.
Okay. Okay, CW?
Yes, and as Tuya said, we work together on that. And let's see what else. Spent a great deal of time in an advisory capacity with the Race Relations in Clayton Committee. Also attended that webinar. And let's see, what else? Paid my taxes. I think that's it.
Thank you for doing that. We all need that. Since property taxes are among our highest in the income. So that's wonderful. Jeff?
Yeah, I mostly email phone calls with local residents about sundry items. That's about it.
Okay. I did have several meetings by Zoom this time. We did a TransPAC, which is the Central County Transportation Planning Committee. We met and went over our annual budget and our annual work plan. We also, I met with the Housing Methodology Committee for ABAG, where we are looking at how to allocate the Regional Housing Needs Assessment for this next cycle. And I will be giving you more of a report. I'm also going to be reporting along with a couple of the professional planners here in Contra Costa at the Mayor's Conference. So you might want to log into that presentation to give you a more thorough understanding of where we are. I am in the minority of the group. There are some folks who are strongly advocating that we do things much more like we have been doing them. And there are some of us who believe very strongly that we need to use Plan Bay Area 2050 as the basis for the allocation of total housing units. There is a dramatic difference in how that affects us. We're still going to get a lot of units because we're getting two and a half times the allocation from the state. But if we use Plan Bay Area 2050, it shifts most of the housing requirement to the South Bay, where the jobs are. What a concept. And should help us to meet the greenhouse gas targets of Plan Bay Area 2050. There are, as I said, a lot of the advocates, the housing advocates, the equity advocates, who all want spread like peanut butter. We're going to be doing a presentation. Mindy Gentry, who is also on the committee with me, you all remember her. She made a presentation to the Public Managers Group last week. They wanted full presentation. They agree with Mindy and I that we've got to change where this is headed. And so we're doing a full court press. I'm working with my colleagues in the East Bay and North Bay to see if we can't make this happen. Because realistically, we're so far away from being able to meet our greenhouse gas targets in this plan already, that if we don't put the houses in the right place, we'll never make it. So it's a basic disagreement we're having. So we've had several meetings and we will be doing more of that as we get closer. And yeah, it's almost completely bad. I did have a Bay Area Regional Collaborative Meeting as well, where we heard about sea level rise and that sort of thing. But that's basically what I've been spending my time on. So we will go to other reports now, and we have Ed Miller with us, and he's going to report on what's going on at CCTA for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Hi, Ed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I don't have a tremendous amount to report back to you at this point in time. I did want to give you a couple of important top-line bullets. The least of which, the least important of which, I'm actually now the chairperson for the next year on CCTA Citizens Advisor Committee. But we are at the beginning of our two-year cycle, approving funds for each municipality and some county at-large entities as well. So I'm here more or less to say that we're at the beginning of that cycle. Clayton gets to, you know, submit a proposal to the CTA as to when they would like to present their presentation during this two-year window. So we're talking, there's a long time here yet. But I also, the second piece of that would be that I would say that if anyone, city engineer or anyone is working on something like that and they would like some resource assistance from within the CTA, some advice, or need some additional information from us in order to embark on that, then by all means, let us know how we can help. You know, we look over these every meeting, so we're fairly familiar with what needs to be covered and what might look good or what might be an item of concern.
That's great. That's great. Jim, did I skip you?
No.
You gave your report.
Yes, I did.
We're talking fire. I will just add on to what Ed mentioned. I will tell you, and you're practically the first people to know, I got a phone call from Randy Iwasaki this afternoon, and he was bursting with good news. And that is that the sales tax returns in the county have been far higher than we expected them to be in our budget. We've done virtually a 20% cut to the budget for this next year. We're going to keep it that way, but the program side of things should be in better shape. But it turns out that the sales tax dollars are coming in much higher. They're doing an analysis to see exactly where, that they are expecting it's going to be the online sales that is giving us the boost. And so while it's still going to be lower than it traditionally has been, it will be only half as big a cut, it looks like, as what we were expecting. So that's really good news. That means we should not have to cut the actual programs. We probably will still have to keep the projects that we put on hold until we make sure that this next fiscal year isn't going to be too badly impacted by Corona the way this year has been. So just to be safe and make sure we can make all our debt service and that sort of thing, we're going to keep things online. But I literally just got the call this afternoon as the chair. It'll be going to our Admin and Projects Committee the first weekend in August. So there is that. The next item on our agenda is public comment.
Julie?
I'm sorry, Tuya?
Can I just say one other thing? I just wanted to congratulate Ed for being elected the chair of the committee. I mean, I think Ed has only been in that position as Clayton representative for about a year. So to be elected the chair, that's great and great representation for Clayton.
We should have those baseball sounds, you know, where the home run just happened.
Well, I'm sure that Ed is more diligent than most of the attendees there. So that's probably why he's elected, is because he's one of the responsible ones. So thank you, Ed.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, before you go to the next item, I did want to back up. You mentioned about the sales tax. And I was talking with a citizen of Clayton just this morning, and she does an extensive amount of business online. And she was very surprised at the amount of business that she and other people are transacting over the internet. So even though people may not be physically going to work, they are online spending.
They are. They are. I was joking with Randy when I talked to him, that one of my neighbors, a couple of doors down, literally had a FedEx truck and an Amazon delivery and a UPS truck there all at the same time one day last week. They literally just converged. Wow, that's pretty amazing. Keeping the sales tax going, that's a good thing. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and this is restricted to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone in our online audience who wishes to talk about any item not listed on tonight's agenda, you can raise your hand with the Raise Hand feature or hit star nine to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. Yes, we have Melinda Marion. Okay, we'll unmute you. There you go, Melinda, you're on.
All right. Hi. It's been a couple weeks since I've attended these meetings. So thank you, Mayor and councilmembers again for your time. I just got back from a long road trip to Colorado. We stopped a few times along the way, and I was pleased to see how cities across the country are showing their support for equality and justice. It was a reflective time where peace and harmony were felt and abound. In Park City, Utah, the words Black Lives Matter, along with messages of solidarity, unity, and justice, run the length of Park City's historic Main Street. Four murals were painted on the pavement of Park City's popular commercial district, a collaborative project spearheaded by the city government and the Park City Summit County Arts Council. "They wanted to show their support for the issues going around in the country," said the artist. Seeing the beautiful artwork that read "Justiciais Paratodos," which translates to justice for all, "as my family walked down Main Street was such a welcoming feeling as a person of color visiting a predominantly white community." In Aspen, Colorado, four oversized 3D words are placed at various locations. The four words are love, respect, unity, and commit. The creator of that campaign said it was designed to get people involved in debate over major issues of the day and engage in dialogue, even if they disagree. Upon arrival of the hotel we were staying in Snowmass, Colorado, we received a letter from the president of the hotel stating the company's position on racism and racial inequality. In addition, he outlined the changes they have already made and the changes for the future that will bring more diversity and inclusivity to the company and the community. He recognized the faults and the challenges the company will face, and with full support of Black Lives Matter and commitment to a better future. As I've stated before, I love Clayton. We can be better. Let's use cities and leaders across the nation to learn from and grow. We have much work to do, and I do recognize small steps have been made to bring peace and harmony to our community. Leaders of Clayton, it is my plea and wish for the community that you keep the social issues of today at the forefront of your thoughts, that you speak up and take action for what is right. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melinda. Is there anyone else? I don't see any other raised hands. So we will close the, oh, Sandra Mazza. We'll get you unmuted here. Okay, you're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I appreciate the fact that at my last meeting, you were addressed about the landscaping issue over here in Eagle Peak off of our development that had been slated for maintenance and had not been maintained. And I was so pleased that crews came out and were working and cleaning up the hillside for the previous trails. And I really appreciate the quickness of the response. I really do. We can't still, the trail, the actual paths are not in place. They've got eroded over the years. I don't know if the actual trails will be able to be restored or not. Those are probably available in the original landscaping layout when the development was built. But that would be nice if the trails could actually be carved back in and then subsequently on an annual or biannual or semi-annual basis at least. I really do appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. That's always nice to hear good comments. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak under public comment? I see no hands raised. So we will close the public comment period. And we will go next to our public hearings. We have one, and that is a public hearing on the proposed real property assessments for Diablo Estates and the Clayton Benefit Assessment District. And we have a report from Scott Omen, our city engineer. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm coming to you some video because of bandwidth issues. If I turn on the video, I will likely drop and miss out or stop the presentation. So tonight, we're asking, coming before you to ask to have a public hearing for the annual engineers' report and the intent to levy and collect the assessments for the Diablo Estates Benefit Assessment District. The, just a little bit of background. The district was formed in 2012 at the request of the developer, Toll Brothers. It's formed under the Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972 and the Benefit Assessment Act of 1982. It benefits only private owners, the 24 owners in the Benefit Assessment District in the Diablo Estates subdivision. It's an entirely private subdivision. The city does act as the property manager in some offices, and we contract out the maintenance that would normally be done by a homeowners association. We contract that out to a subcontractor to perform. The district was established with a CPI adjust something there, built into it, bad spelling. And the initial assessment long in 2012 was $3,027.62. One of the things I did want to show the uniqueness of this, this is the 24 units. And as you can see, there are no public streets. They are all private. The homeowners own to the center line of all of the streets, and all of the common area around it is all privately owned. So there's no public ownership in this subdivision at all.
Yes.
So each year, the assessment can be adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. The index that's used is the April 2019, or the April to April All Consumers Index for the Bay Area. And this year, from 2019 to April of 2020, it was an increase of 1.1%. Just as an aside, if we had used the February to February index, it would have been closer to 3.5%. But the difference between the February and the Aprils were COVID-related and dramatically reduced. So the annual budget for this year, for 2021, is a total of $90,280.96. And the per-lot assessment, accounting for some rounding that's in here, is $3,761.70. And by the end of the year, we should have a reserve funds balance of $178,000, almost $179,000. Seems like a huge number, but it is needed. And I can show shortly here how it's going to be needed. I'm going to move you around here. So some of the breakdown of the costs involved per year, or specifically for this year, common area landscaping is almost $24,000. Weed abatement is $14,800. Storm drain system maintenance, $6,800. Private street lighting, $1,800. District administration is $21,000. And there's more involved in district administration than just an administrator, and I'll get to that in a moment. And then the reserves component for this year is $22,000. You add interest income in, which I hadn't put into the original budget because I didn't know what the amount was. You have $1,000 of that. So that makes the total $91,281, where I'd said 90 previously. So in the district administration are some of the subcontracted items, the monthly site inspections that occur, maintenance oversight and contracting, and then the contract services themselves. It also includes city engineer services for any oversight that needs to be done there for preparation of the Benefit Assessment District documents, the engineers' report, that sort of thing. Legal noticing that goes out, the cost of mailing, the different notices, and then the county fees for levying and collecting the assessments annually. Here's a projection of the budget for the year. It's, sorry, same numbers. It was just, this is the actual city budget worksheet that came out of the budget, which was adopted here a short time ago, June 30th. So the reserve funds balance. After, at the end of this year, there will be amounts for tree replacement, entry monument replacement. And each of these items that are in here has a specific lifespan that was built into the original engineers' report. And in order to save up and have money accrued to the point when the item, whatever it is, reaches the end of its lifespan, usable lifespan, it needs to be replaced, we need to have funds set aside, sinking funds set aside for that action to take place. But these are the amounts that are, will be available at the end of the 2020 budget. I'd like to show one other thing if I can, just quickly. This is a quick calculator, calculation that quickly shows the need for the reserve amount. At the end of 10 years, accruing, accruing at the rate that we are accruing and projecting the costs of each of these items that have a 10-year balance. You can see, not all of these are coming due, but the one that comes due at the end is the stormwater replacement. So out of the money that we've accrued, we end up spending $130,000 roughly. Then we start and go the next 10 years, and there, I'm sorry, there's three items. I missed the two blue ones. And then again, at the end of 20 years, we're gathering funds, we're accruing funds, but we will need those as we move forward. Because at the end of 25 years, you have a large, another $170,000, $172,000, and the balance drops back down. So this is presuming that everything goes according exactly to plan, which it may or may not. But there is need for that accrual of that sinking fund. And sometimes you look at the number and think, why are we have so much money? Well, it's there for a reason and we need it. So with that, that is the end of my report to share, but I'll be happy to try and answer any questions if there are from you.
Thank you, Scott. Tuya?
So I know that, first of all, thank you for this report. But I know that some of the residents in that area, at least a year ago, had some questions about the actual maintenance activities and inspection activities that have taken place. And I think we asked, you know, back then, you know, whether it's possible for the maintenance company to provide some kind of summary, you know, annually, for example, in terms of what they've actually done. So I don't know if you have some material that could be made available to residents or if there's anything that they are preparing. I'm not looking for any super extensive and detailed report, but something just that indicates, you know, here are the inspections we did. Here are some of the key maintenance activities we undertook. So can you let me know if anything like that exists or could exist?
Yeah, it does exist. At the end of last year, we met with the folks up at Diablo Estates, walked with them. They had concerns and legitimate concerns. They were voicing some true concern. We do have reports We do have reports that we get from the project, the program manager, project manager matrix, which I will be happy to share with the folks, anyone who's interested in it, yes, absolutely we can. So yeah, the answer is yes, they're, they can be very easily available.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, Jeff?
I mean, just to piggyback off of what Councilmember Catalano mentioned, I think maybe in the future reports, it would be great to have a high-level summary of activities, you know, that, I think that that would be nice to have. It shows in the budget what types of activities we're talking about, but it doesn't really give a good idea what was actually performed and when. I did have a few questions though. On one of your slides, it didn't tie to the, what was in the agenda and you mentioned there's $1,000 of interest included on the presentation that you gave. Was that interest received or interest paid?
It's interest received. That was revenue side.
Okay, revenue side budget, got it. And then, you know, the projected reserve at the end of 2021 on your, I think on the presentation showed 178,000?
Correct, almost, almost 179.
On the, on the agenda, it shows 186? So I don't know if we have, if there's like a formula going on, something weird, but...
It must be because the, the spreadsheet that I use to calculate this, it's at 178,985. The 186 may have been a leftover from an earlier budget projection, but yeah, it should, it is at 178,985.
Okay. I don't know if we make corrections when we, we probably don't make corrections to the agendas, but if we reflect it in the minutes, that'd be good so that we show that, so that we address the variance there. And then when we do the estimate, it looks a lot like an HOA assessment, essentially like evaluating all the items. When we establish the lives of these things, are we doing that just straight line or we, do we go out and do an assessment of the valuation each time at some periodic interval to see if the reserve, you know, just to reevaluate based on if the reserve balances are sufficient?
It, it was done initially in the initial engineers' report and so that's the projection that's used because we need to keep that as the basis in order to stay away from 218 process. But we, I do, that's the spreadsheet that I was showing at the end there was my own projection of, you know, what, what are we going to use moving forward? Now, I'm escalating this by the same amounts that are in the CPI. So, you know, you're, you're playing both sides of the equation and increasing it or, you know, the, the assessment increase that you can do or the assessment adjustment and the, the cost of living that you put onto the actual expenses are basically the same. So they're rising at the same amount. So it's as close as I can really get with what I've got right now. Because when you walk the, the project, it walks and looks in good shape. Some of the things that will need to be done will look good until the day they're done, which are the low-impact development, the bio swells, that sort of thing. The soil ends up terminating because it just has no more value for cleaning or, you know, treating the stormwater. So even though it looks fine, it, it will need to be replaced, those sorts of things. Concrete is in good shape, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I guess my main question was whether we, any periodically review the status, but it sounds like what you're saying is that we, we rely on the initial report and then peg off of that for all the go-forward years. So that's, that's fine.
We do peg off of it, but we do watch the, the actual physical condition in the field as well to make sure we don't have some disastrous problem somewhere that, that will throw the timeline out. But so far, it's marching along very well.
Sounds good. Yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand or hit star nine if you are on the phone. Anyone in the audience wishes to comment on this item? I know I'm waiting a little because I know I, and I'm scrolling through the attendees to see.
Sandra's there, I believe.
Yes, Sandra had a comment and we will unmute you. You're ready to go.
Okay, I, thank you for taking my question. I just wondered what, what that means to the city of Clayton. Are taxes given or any fees accrued in the city of Clayton from that Diablo Estates business?
Scott, you want to answer that or you want me to?
Yeah, let me answer that.
Yep.
There is...
Thank you.
Hmm. Sorry, it's taking me to say, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking.
I believe we have a small administration fee.
Yeah, there's item, items, line items 7420, which is an administrative rate of costs, which is a transfer to the general, $2,500. It's, that's, it's been in the low twos, 200, low 2000s previously.
And maybe just to clarify for Sandra, this district is not paid by the general taxpayers of Clayton, so no, no other funds itself supported by their own levies that we issue and then those monies have a little bit of cost that comes back to the general fund for the administration of the district. So there's no other funds that are being used from the city's general fund for this project development.
Okay. Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, any other public comments? I don't see any raised hands. So we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution confirming the assessments for the operation and maintenance within Diablo Estates for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Catalano, a second by Juan.
Are you moving that? Is that what the corrections that have to be?
Yes. And we will make note of the discrepancy and get that clarified for the minute. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Pierce. Councilmember Catalano.
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is an action item and this is to adopt a resolution condemning racism. And Tuya put this together, so I'm going to pass it to her to present.
Great, thank you. So this is something that I mentioned in late June as wanting to bring, this is the full council for adoption. Many city, other cities have done this nationwide, so we're obviously not the first or the only city. It is obviously symbolic, but I think it is important. So if you look at the draft for a solution that's in the packets, you'll see that all the actual action items are directed to action by the council, by the city council members. I'm hoping that all of you are okay with the action items, which in brief condemn racism, commit us to work to bridge divisions, to build inclusivity and strengthen our community and then to keep our ears and eyes open to ways to address racism and prejudice. So it is obviously a draft and since the decision to approve it is a collaborative decision by all of us, I'm happy to hear if there are any suggested edits or any improvements that any of you would like to have included. But with that, I would ask for your support in approving the resolution and happy to answer any questions any of you have.
And CW?
Okay, as far as language is concerned, I'm, I'm fine with all of this. I just have one quick question about the longevity of this, being that we are starting with specific names. I would propose that we may be short-sighted in just citing a couple of names offhand. I know this is the most recent, but you know, 10 years from now, this may not be relevant as far as just general names are concerned. I think we should probably look at a more inclusive wording, maybe even rather than add to the names, maybe something to the effect of hurt and outrage grieving over the deaths of men and women of color whose lives, you know what I mean? So that we're not citing specific, specific names and leaving others out.
Got it, yep. Good point.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would like to chime in on that. For those of you that may have read the, and I agree with that, CW, because if you read the Contra Costa, or excuse me, East Bay Times article about two Sundays ago, full front page, about 110 deaths on that, on behalf of law enforcement with people of color. I actually dove into the numbers and interestingly enough, in the greater Bay Area since 2015, these 110 deaths, 30 were black Americans, 32 were Hispanic Americans. So, and it went down from there in terms of Asian Americans and then of course, white Americans. I, I agree with Councilmember Wolf and I wonder if it ought to be a little more, less generic in terms of specific names, but more inclusive of all people of color. Not just to mention, not just a broad brush of people of color because we have a significant Hispanic-American community here in Clayton that is probably the second largest of the, of the people of color.
Okay, any other comments?
I would, I would just say that in the phrasing, Asian people, the people part is not capitalized. So that's all. I think people of color is a term of art, so therefore it does, but the others are not, so therefore it does not.
It is in the third whereas, but we missed it somewhere else.
So you're saying it, it should be uncapitalized, yeah.
People, the people part is lowercase.
Yeah, got it, got it.
I mean, it's not, it's pretty ticky-tacky, it's not a big deal.
But we're going to make it right when we sign it, so let's fix it. So we'll make that first whereas, just a little less specific by name, but make it more inclusive for groups of people of color. Is that where we're headed? Okay?
In the, in the fifth item, what, what, did we, I'm assuming that you wrote this and you probably looked in collaboration with how other cities and other agencies have acted. On the fifth, one, two, three, four, fifth item, when we say root out, like, what do you, can we clarify that? It seems a little witch-hunty to me, but is there, I'm just looking at the, also it's a term of art as well, so it can have various meanings, so I'm curious.
Do you have a better suggestion?
I think the, well, I mean, the goal is really for awareness and not necessarily education, but just like to bring the issues to fore and, you know, root out, you know, it carries the meaning of like getting rid of it and removing it. And so I, I don't think that's really what we're, what we're doing, especially if we're talking about people. I don't, I don't think that's what we're doing, but I don't know. I didn't know what you, what you thought. I thought maybe it's like a, you know, it's a, make the changes necessary to...
Is it, is it more of a, are you thinking more of a stamp out? Is, I mean, because the word root being like your, like you said, kind of witch-hunty, you're going after people, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I think...
So it's, so it says root out racism and it's tied, I think, a little bit to the last where, the further resolve clause where we talk about how the city council itself pledges to seek ways to assess and modify any policies or any services that we have to address, you know, any form of racism. Form, there's forms of racism, it should be off racism, by the way, there's a typo there. But, you know, necessary to address racism, you know, if there's a better word, happy to change that out, but I think, I think the, I think you get the purpose.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a big problem with it or anything. I just, it just sounded kind of, it stood out, but all.
Would it be better to just say remove? discourage? Eliminate?
I mean, I think what, Councilmember Catalano, what you're saying in the end, when it's talking about in terms of the city, I think root out from the city is perfect. So I don't know if that, if that, I don't know how to wordsmith that right now. Like I said, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, it just stood out, that's all.
Okay, well, while we're thinking about that, why don't we go to public comment and see if there's anyone in our audience? There was one hand raised and it went down. But we'll go to Amy first and we'll get you unmuted, Amy. There you go, you're ready.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor Pierce, esteemed council members and honorable staff. My name is Amy Heinschike, I live in the Regent C Meadows area of Clayton, I have since 2012. And I'm really, really happy to see this. This makes me very proud to be a Claytonian. I feel especially glad that it also not just addresses the Black Lives Matter movement, although my only suggestion, if you were taking suggestions, would be to actually say Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter is a movement and so we're in support of that, or I am very much in support of that. But also to show the solidarity with the Asian community, I'm sure that most of you are aware that there is a person that has on their, their own private property outside of town, anti-Asian slurs about the COVID-19 virus and it's very publicly displayed. And I don't think that we can have something like that displayed. It's on private property, we can't do anything about it, but it is really important to me that in this resolution, it stated that we don't believe in that here because it's wrong and we have to stand up against that. So thank you very much. Councilmember Catalano and everybody else's statements were basically supportive here and just had very minor edits and I'm, I'm happy to be a Claytonian and thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any other people who wish to comment under public comments? Scott Denzilow? Hang on, we'll get you unmuted, Scott. There you go, you're ready.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate your time. Just want to take a few minutes to reflect on, the last few days, our country's lost two great leaders passing above C.T. Vivian and John Lewis. C.T. Vivian was a true pioneer of the civil rights movement in many ways, a grandfather of the movement. He lived rich and full life, was a mentor to Dr. Martin Luther King and passed away at 95 years old. John Lewis became a national leader at the young age of only 23. He was at the forefront of almost every major civil rights battle and almost lost his life trying to make the trek across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama on Bloody Sunday. Mr. Lewis was subsequently joined on the bridge by Dr. Martin Luther King and many other respected leaders in the civil rights movement a short time later. These images are honestly some of the most iconic and powerful in American history. They represent overcoming struggle in an active fight against the very equality that they were fighting for. My wife and I had the opportunity to cross the Edmund Pettus Bridge on our pilgrimage to Selma, Alabama just a few years ago for the 50th anniversary jubilee, celebrating this event. And it's one of the most moving and powerful experiences of our lives. With all that said, it's the least that Clayton can do to offer a simple statement or proclamation condemning racism when so many others have given their lives for this cause. So we really do appreciate the leaders, all of you guys, all, every... So we really do appreciate the leaders, all of you guys, all, every, all the leaders at Clayton coming together tonight to condemn racism in whatever way you see fit. This is very important to a lot of members of our community. I think it really honors the memories of the legacies of people like Mr. Vivian, Mr. Lewis and Dr. King. I certainly look forward to you all moving forward tonight and moving forward with efforts in the future. Again, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Scott. The next speaker is Melinda Marion. We'll get you unmuted here. There you go, Melinda. You're ready.
Okay. Thank you again for your time. I want to thank Councilmember Catalano for proposing a resolution condemning racism. And thank you all for your consideration as I see this as a first step to doing the right thing. As I've said in previous meetings and others have expressed during previous council meetings and on social media, it is important the city, the city sends a message that racism is not tolerated in Clayton. Steps like this have a ripple effect. There is nothing but positivity in this effort and by voting for this resolution can only put us in the right direction. I hope you all agree and vote in support of this resolution against racism. I thank you in advance for your support and your commitment to making all people feel included and safe. Thank you again.
Thank you, Melinda. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment under public comment on this item? Nancy Top, and then she will be followed by De Vera. Nancy, you are live now.
Hello. I would just like to encourage Clayton City Council to make a, this formal written statement against racism in Clayton. Clayton has long had a reputation of being racist and unwelcoming to people of color. And I hope we can turn that impression around. I would like that for all people, including people of color, to live here freely, interact and be a part of the community we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. That's what this resolution is all about. We will go to De Vera. And you are live, Dee. Dee, you are unmuted. We can't hear you. Oops. Unmute her again. Dee, you need to unmute your end, I think. Laura, can you get her unmuted? There. Dee, can you hear us? You can speak now.
Her audio is not working.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Dee. We can't hear you. You might be muted on your end.
Or she might have an incompatible.
Right. I think we had this problem once before. So I'm sorry, Dee, we can't hear you. So we're going to go ahead.
You can call the city clerk though, 671, or 673, 7304. And we could get her comments in if she wants to make the phone call.
Right. Okay. So when you make contact with the city clerk, she can put it on the microphone on her phone so that we can hear you. So we'll give her a couple of seconds to do that.
And we do have Melinda Marion who's raised her hand, I believe, on this.
Melinda just spoke on that.
Melinda did. Okay.
Yeah. Melinda has already spoken, so we need to lower the hand.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. Well, we're going to go bring it back here. If we hear from Dee shortly, we'll, we'll bring her in. But Janet, let me know if you hear from her. In the meantime, have you had a chance to think about the wording to you that you want to change that first whereas?
So I'm, I'm happy to make the first fair as CW mentioned. So just take, you know, essentially some of the names out, but, but make it more inclusive by saying grieving over the deaths of men and women whose lives, men and, CW said, men and women.
Men and women of color.
Yeah, whose lives were unjustly taken. So we'll make that edit.
Actually, I know there are children involved here too. I, I don't know how you, how you add that in. I mean, some sad cases just recently as well.
So you can say men, women and children. Yeah. Then in the third whereas, we'll correct the word people and make it not, not a capital P. And then in the very last further resolve, there's a typo forms. It should be forms of racism, not or. So there's a quick typer. And Jeff, I would leave the root out racism. I think that's an expression. So I would leave it as it is unless you have a better word for that.
You okay with that, Jeff?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. All right. Well, we haven't heard from Dee yet through the city clerk. So we know this is something she wanted to have included. So hopefully she is accepting of this. And we do have one more comment from Holly Tillman. We'll get you unmuted here, Holly. Okay, Holly, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was just going to ask if it's possible to give Dee the number one more time, just in case she didn't catch.
Sure. We can do that. Did you have another comment, Holly?
No. Thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, the number to call in if you can't get through Dee is 673-7304.
Oh no, operators are standing by.
Just one operator.
Yeah, one operator.
That's okay. Janet can handle it. All right.
That, that's going to be her new, it's going to be on our business card.
There you go. There you go. Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. So do I have a motion to you?
We'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Yeah, okay. Motion by Catalano, a second by Wolf. All in favor, Janet, please call the roll.
Mayor Pierce, I actually have De Vera on the line.
Ah, okay. Well, we'll let her speak before we take the roll.
Sounds great.
Hi, Dee. Janet, you're muted.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in trouble with the audio. Not sure what the problem is there, but I just want to let you know I support the resolution to condemn racism and the proclamation for June 15th. Both members of the Black Lives Matter and LQQ community have been subject to unfair treatment for far too long. This is a human rights issue. If there is any confusion as to what that means, it is a, human rights are generally thought of as the most, as the most fundamental rights. They include the right to life, education, protection from torture, free expression and fair child. Many of these rights lead into civil rights, but they are considered to be necessities of human existence. So I just want to let you know I fully support this resolution and I hope you move forward with it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dee, for your perseverance. We appreciate that. All righty. So Janet, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pierce, Councilmember Catalano.
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you to you for putting that together. I know we collaborated a bit on it, but you did the heavy lifting. So thank you very much for that. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of a resolution authorizing a salary adjustment for the assistant to the city manager for serving as the acting city manager. And we have a report from our city attorney, Mala Subramaniam.
You didn't want to have Laura do the presentation?
No.
It's, it's amazing. She gets to sit in on the presentation.
We can turn her video off if you'd like. There, she already did it herself.
Oh, she disappeared. Ooh.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council. What you have before you is a resolution, as the mayor indicated, to make a salary adjustment for the assistant to the city manager, Laura Hoffmeister. As you're aware, she's been serving as your acting city manager since May 29th, when your former city manager resigned. During that time, she's done an incredible job and in very difficult circumstances, given the pandemic. She's welcomed and trained two new department heads. Given all of this, the mayor has been in discussions with her about this potential adjustment to her salary. So what is before you is a recommendation to adopt this resolution. It would retroactively adjust her salary for the period that she has served as acting city manager from May 29th through today to the salary of $14,123. This would amount to $10,318 increase for that period. She'd then revert back to her previous salary effective, effective July 21st. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. If there are no questions, I will see if there's any public comment on this item.
What about comments?
Okay. Comments are fine.
Well, I want to, I just want to go on record as saying that I thought Laura did a hell of a job doing both her own job as assistant to the city manager and acting city manager. Through this time and in the past where she didn't receive the compensation when she periodically sat in for the city manager on his absence. She has clearly demonstrated to me she is capable of being a full-fledged city manager. Maybe not in Clayton, but in some other municipality. She has demonstrated far beyond what I expected, her capabilities. And I want to just fully endorse this. In fact, if, I would hope that once we get through this interim period, she will be back in contention. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else have comments before I go to public comment?
Yeah. I'd like to just echo everything Jim said. I, I've been speaking with Laura on and off, like four times, I think today alone. And she's always responded very quickly and with a lot of knowledge. And I appreciate her help and, and everything she's done for us over this time.
Okay. To you.
So I'll mention as well, obviously, so thank you to Laura. And, and as was already mentioned by our city attorney, the period within which she was the interim city manager was extremely busy with a lot of things getting thrown at her. So it wasn't, it wasn't like you got to sit on your desk all day long. So, so thank you. Good job.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you as well. I think, I always believe in compensating people fairly. So, and this, this is more than fair. So.
Here, here.
Well, thank you all for that support. We, we couldn't have gotten through it nearly as well without Laura's help. And she's really been all hands on deck in extraordinary times, even without a pandemic, this would have been a challenge. But there was a lot going on and we really appreciate everything Laura has done. I do not see any hands raised for public comment on this item. So I would make the motion that we adopt this resolution authorizing this temporary salary adjustment for the assistant to the city manager. Do I have a second?
Jim De is second.
Thank you, Jim. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Catalano.
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, with great thanks to Laura for, for keeping us all on track and, and helping us out through this time. It's, it's been really extraordinary. So the next item on the agenda is the reason that Laura is not going to have to be the acting city manager. She just gets to help train one. So the next item on our agenda is to execute a contract with our new interim city manager, Fran Robustelli. And Mala, do you want to do an intro on what this contract includes for us?
Sure. Happy to do so, mayor. It is an interim city manager employment agreement. It includes a salary of $190,000. It also provides for a car allowance of $400 as well as a tech allowance. I don't know if, mayor, did you want to discuss Fran's background or did you want me to mention?
Well, I, I think I will go ahead and do that. Thank you for handling the legal parts of this. And I would just like to say welcome Fran. You see Fran here on your screen. She is with us this evening. Fran has served as the assistant city manager for the city of Walnut Creek. And then as, as their interim city manager when they were doing a very broad search. And she has most recently served as the assistant city manager in the city of Napa. And in talking with the city manager there, you may wonder why she's coming back to Clayton. Well, Napa got hit hard, really hard in their budget. And unfortunately Fran was the victim of that budget cut. And I heard from the city manager there that she actually helped balance their budget, but her job was the cost of that. And that is our luck because she is available to come and help us. And Fran is a resident of Walnut Creek. And so she can be able to stay close to home and we are just really thrilled with Fran to have you onboard. So welcome. And why don't I first take the vote to approve this and then we'll let Fran say a couple of words after we make it official.
Can I just, can I just clarify? There is no wine allowance?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right. I do have a question. I have a question of the city attorney. What's the term of the interim agreement?
It's at the pleasure of the council. I know you are going through a process to recruit a permanent city manager. And so should that occur, you can give appropriate notice and, and terminate the interim city manager employment agreement.
All right. Thank you.
It's not a fixed term.
Open ended, as we say.
Yes. At well, open ended.
Right.
Mayor, you just need to make sure if there's any public comment.
Yes, I will. Any other questions, comments by the council? I will go to public comment. Is there any member of the public that wants to comment on this item? I don't see any hands raised yet. No hands raised.
Sandra's hand is raised.
I see Sandra's hand is raised, I believe.
Yes, there it is. I had to scroll back up. Sandra?
Hi.
You're ready.
Hi. Thank you for taking my question. I was wondering what happened to Ikutani. What was his name? I had some interaction with him and I was wondering what happened.
He resigned on May 29th.
Did he have any kind of family emergency or something?
All I know is he resigned.
Okay. Thank you very much. I was just curious. Thank you for taking my question.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that have comments on this item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. And again, I'm going to exercise the mayor's prerogative and make the motion. Who wants a second?
I'll second that.
Awesome. I had.
I'm Mr. Second today.
Same time on the screen. So that's great. All right. Janet, you got that?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. And I will ask you to please call the roll for that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Catalano.
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes, and welcome, Fran.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Aye. Good luck.
And Mayor Pierce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Welcome, Fran. And would you like to say a few words? You can unmute yourself. There you go.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and, um, council members. I first just want to thank you all for, um, trusting me to come into this interim leadership role, and I am looking forward to the opportunity to serve your community and feel it is an honor and really thrilled to be joining the city team. I've heard nothing but great things about staff, and of course, you just reinforced it tonight, uh, with Laura. I have, I know Laura a little bit, so I'm looking forward to working with you more closely and, um, getting to know your staff and team. And I also am excited during this transition to help you all, um, through me getting to know your community better, getting to know staff, and really helping you move your council priorities forward and, and not have you skip a beat. So, really excited to be on board and, um, can't wait to eventually meet you all in person, so, thank you very much again.
That's great, and she'll get.
Are we making, are we making history, Mayor, tonight? Are we making history with our, our first female, uh, city?
I think we are.
So, I'm Laura with interim, Fran with interim.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, interim, we have to wait.
Glenn Dansker served as interim city manager some decades back.
Uh, and on multiple occasions for Laura.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you could get right on the, uh, vaccine work.
Yeah. Please.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, welcome, Fran. Um, and Fran has her first staff meeting at 10:30 tomorrow morning, so that is at City Hall, and everybody will be present, but I'm meeting her first, so, uh, to introduce her around before that, so.
Mayor, and I gave you a bum, bum, uh, comment this morning. It's actually 10 o'clock, I forgot, the staff meeting.
So... Well, that's what I had told Fran first, but you told me 10:30, so.
It was just a busy day today, no air conditioning, so wear something light tomorrow, still working on the air conditioner repair.
Weather is supposed to be good tomorrow, so we should be okay. We're good the rest of this week. Gotta have it fixed by next week. Okay. Um, and, by the way, we think that's an internet issue, so. All right, the next item on the agenda is council items. This is limited to council requests and directives for future meetings. We have several things pending on that list as we go forward over the next couple of months, but we've already entered those into our tickler list, so anything else besides what we already have? I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Oh, sorry, I do have one other item, sorry. Uh, so, not necessarily for the council, but I wanted to, um, work with Matthew and the staff to put together, um, essentially a handout that we could put in our city website with some FAQs regarding the housing element. That's something that's gonna be coming up, and I'm not looking at anything, uh, of opinion, but more about just facts on what's a housing element. Just very basic things about what's a housing element, what's the next cycle, what does it mean? So a few things like that, and I've seen some other cities who've done similar FAQs, just as informative pieces for their, um, their citizens. So I, I wanted to just mention that I would love to work with Matthew a little bit and give him a couple examples of what some of the cities have done. Maybe come up with a little bit of a handout, just explain some of the basics and be able to put that on our website.
Perhaps we could plagiarize.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I think the league may even have something on their website, so let's not reinvent the wheel, let's find something else.
Pleasant Hill, among other cities, has a really good sort of a seven-page handout that's not too extensive. So, not intending this to be time-consuming at all for, for our staff, but just to have some resource on our letterhead available, uh, for any citizens.
Okay. Alrighty, anything else? If not, um, we have no closed session this evening, so we will adjourn to our next council meeting on August 4th, and I will, um, figuratively hand the gavel to Jeff to conduct the Oakhurst G-HAD meeting.
Great, so I will call to order the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District Meeting for July 21st. I will note that all council members are present, one, two, three, four, five, awesome. Um, and the first item is public comment, so this is for comment on any items not on the agenda. If anyone has any comments, feel free to raise your hand, and the wizard behind the curtain will act.
There are no hands being raised at this time, Vice Mayor.
Excellent, well, this is your chance, all right. Uh, I, the next item we have, well, actually, hold on, I've closed public comment. Next item is the consent calendar, um, the only item. All right. Uh, Mayor Pierce moves approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, good. I'm like Mr. Second today.
Leave me hanging here. Uh, all right, I have a first and a second. Uh, Janet, will you take the roll?
Absolutely. Okay, uh, Board Member Catalano.
Hi.
Board Member Pierce, yes. Board Member Wolf.
Hi.
Vice Chair Diaz.
Yes.
And Chair Juan.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, I pass this. Next item is public hearing, so did I understand correctly that this is getting continued to the August 4th meeting? Is that what we talked about?
Staff recommends, uh, because the report has not been prepared, to go ahead and open the hearing and then continue it to the 4th, but anybody who has chimed in that wants to speak can still address you tonight.
Sure. All right, so just as a formality, we are, uh, we are gonna continue this item, but it's on the agenda, so we can take comment. Um, if anyone would like to make public comment on this item, which is the proposed real tax proper, proposed real property tax assessment for the G-HAD, uh, feel free to raise your hand, and we can take comment here. All right, seeing none, I will close all the comments, and as mentioned, we will continue this item until the next meeting, which is scheduled for, looking like Tuesday, August 4th.
Could we get a motion on that to continue it to August 4th?
Oh, all right.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, Mayor Pierce moves, do I have a second?
Second.
That's where you step in, Carl.
Yeah, my job.
All right. All right, Janet, will you take the roll, please?
Absolutely. Board Member Catalano.
Hi.
Board Member Pierce, yes. Board Member Wolf.
Hi.
Vice Chair Diaz.
Yes.
And Chair Juan.
Hi.
Thank you.
I pass unanimously the motion to continue this item until the August 4th meeting. Uh, there are no action items, and so next is board items. Does anyone have any requests for future meetings?
Actually, yes, I do. Um, we received an email from a, um, resident up in Oakhurst to get an update on the, uh, seismic activity up there, the landslides. And I know that Scott, uh, responded already and is working on that, so when he has that information, we'd like to bring that back to the full board rather than just communicating back to that one resident.
I think that's a good idea. Um, and I, I will just reiterate my, uh, requests from previous meetings about the inventory. I think it's mentioned in the minutes that we, uh, approved on consent calendar, so I will, I will reiterate that item as well for our next meeting, or whenever it is practicable. Um, and that is it. So, uh, the next is adjournment, and we are done.
Thank you all.
Adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.